Morning. Please rise. We're led to Pledge of Allegiance by Mr. Greg Wooten.
Thank you. We will start with introductions. Start with Secretary Ms. Payne.
I am Tina Payne. I'm the Secretary for the Board of Education.
Ellie Talbot, General Counsel.
Logan County. Ms. Chatterton Justice? Ms. Justice, are you there?
Can you all hear me? I can't hear you all.
You say you cannot hear us?
Okay, okay, I can hear you now.
Okay.
Okay, okay. Thanks, thanks.
Thank you.
Welcome to the party, Ms. Justice.
Hello, thank you. Sorry, I can't be there.
It's all right. Um, next is approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? It's been moved by Mr. Dunleavy, second with Dr. Stansberry. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Motion carries. Uh, before we get to delegations, um, if the board would indulge me for a moment, uh, ladies and gentlemen, you know it's football season. And at the start of a football game, they go to midfield, they have a coin toss, and two options are on the table. You can either kickoff or you can receive. Well, for the past couple of months, this board's been on the receiving end of some very harsh criticism, undo, I might add. So this, today, I think I'm going to kick off. Um, this board has been referred to as a group of unelected bureaucrats by the chief executive over the immunization issue. Um, the theme for my comments this morning, I want you to bear in mind that I'm going to ask all 55 counties in this state to do a unit study on the very three branches of government. I remember as a child growing up in Logan County, listening on Saturday morning, I think ABC had a program called Schoolhouse Rock. And one of those segments were on the three branches of government. There are three equal branches of government that perform three independent functions. And if you'll bear with me a minute, I want to try to incorporate that into my remarks. Um, the issue of vaccinations is not a new one here for the Board of Education. 1937, West Virginia Code 16-3-4 was enacted. It's pretty clear. This board has issued guidance accordingly since 1991. Now, fast forward to two years ago, a religious freedom law, or an ERPA law, was passed. And now, this board has been challenged, and it will be litigated in a court of law as where they're trying to overlay the two laws. Excuse me. Now, this board holds a function to adhere to current law. The chief executive, who continually refers to us as unelected bureaucrats, and I take offense to that, we are appointed by a governor. We are confirmed through the advice and consent of the Senate, two branches of government, a checks and balance system that vet each one of us before we take these seats. He has repeatedly said that the way he interprets the law, that we should act in a different manner. Our counsel advises us that that's not the way to go. Who's right, who's wrong? I don't know, ladies and gentlemen. I really don't at this point. But I can tell you this with 100% certainty, the chief executive does not have the right or the ability to perform the judicial branch of government's function. This issue will be determined right across the way on the third floor by five quali- quality competent individuals wearing black robes that have that charge as the highest court in this state. And whatever decision they render, I may like it, I may not, but I can assure you with everything in me, this board will comply with their decision. We're not going to comply with an executive order that's in conflict with a 1937 law. We can't do that. We've been advised by our counsel not to do that. I don't want you to think for a minute we're trying to inconvenience the people of West Virginia. We're just trying to do our job. And I don't know what the right or wrong answer is. I know that what I'm doing, I think I'm doing right. I think I'm doing what the law prescribes and what prescribes each of us to do. All I'm saying is this, each, there's a checks and balance system in our government. There's three branches of government. They perform three different functions. I hate it for the people of West Virginia that this issue is not decided before school started. I wish it was, but I don't control the schedule or the timeframe of the judiciary. It takes time. This issue will be decided in the proper venue by the proper people, and we'll get a decision, one way or the other, up or down. And we will comply with that decision, one way or the other. Our function on this board is we want better student achievement for the children of public education in West Virginia, plain and simple. Not here to indoctrinate your children. That's not our chart. That needs to be done at home. That's not our, that, we don't want to do that. But I'm going to call upon every county in this state to do a unit lesson on the three branches of government, because ladies and gentlemen, you're seeing this unfold in real time, and real lives are at stake. This is important. We would never try to infringe on anyone's public right. And I have had the luxury of working with a lot of good governors and for a lot of good governors. I respect Governor Morrissey. I respect the office he holds. Let's be professional. Let's stop the name-calling and let the proper branch of government decide the issue. Thank you very much. Now, Ms. Day, delegations.
Good morning. President Hardisty, President Gabriel, members of the Board, Superintendent Blatt. We do have nine delegations today. Each delegation will have two minutes to present to the board. And our first delegation is Charles Daughtry, speaking on the issue of teacher retention and recruitment.
Uh, thanks as always for the time. Just want you guys to know that this is my last day of my summer break before I get back in the classroom tomorrow. Um, just know I'm spending my time with you. Um, and thanks as always for the opportunity to address you guys. And, um, I know I'm not the only teacher rooting for you guys, not only that case, but a couple of, another case that's on the, on the books heading that way. Uh, I'm here to address an issue that should be treated just as vital and dire. Um, you guys know about the nationwide teacher shortage, and I applaud your efforts, uh, today, the recruitment of future teachers. But I asked the question, what, what are we doing to try to make sure that we are retaining, um, fully certified teachers that are already in the classroom? Um, doesn't take a rocket scientist to realize that the best way to recruit new teachers to any profession is by treating the teachers already in the classrooms with as much respect as we possibly can. And I know this body doesn't have the power to improve pay or fully fund PIA. I'm hoping the people down the, down, down the way work on that ASAP. Um, but what I'm talking about is that we need to give teachers time. Been here before to talk about this. Uh, we keep asking more and more of teachers than we ever have before. And we literally, we, we almost never take anything off our plates while doing so. We keep asking more as if teachers have this endless, endless time, when in reality, we don't. And if you want us to be at our best when we're in the classroom, when we're in front of our kids, we're refreshed, we're fired up, ready to go, starting on day one, and all 180 days, we need to be given time. And so, just like I asked in October, um, I'm asking again for 10 LTA days. Leave teachers alone. 10 days, no meetings, no trainings, just 10 days, once a month, where teachers have unstructured time to work on the things we need to do. Make phone calls, lesson planning, all of that. Um, if I may approach, I can give you guys a copy.
Uh, our next delegation is Chris Zen, on the issue of immunizations.
Good morning, everyone. Um, I'm a retired registered nurse and a member of the Board of the Rural Health Association. And I'm here to thank you for your work on the immunization law and for upholding that. It's very, very important to me as a professional and also personally, because my mother was a victim of polio. Uh, at age 12, she was paralyzed for, for a year, and her best friend was in an iron lung and died. So I have lived, I, I remember as a child, and I don't have a lot of childhood memories, but my brother and I, he's younger, we both remember the day we got our polio vaccine. It was a day to celebrate in our home. My mother was so excited about that. And so I learned as a child about the importance of immunizations. And then as a professional, it was just, it was just made even more important, because I know that vaccines are safe and effective. And I, I'm glad that you're going to help the children of West Virginia be healthy and prevent all these childhood illnesses that kept us out of school for so many, uh, so many days in our childhood before the vaccines were available. My mother spent her whole life disabled. And please, please continue to do the great work you're doing. Thank you.
Next delegation is Billy Reeves. His issue is emergency and permanent closure decision of Verdenville Elementary School.
So, I'm Billy Reeves. I'm a resident of Logan County, just like, uh, you, Mr. Hardisty, and you, Mr. Wooten. Well, we, it was announced that Verdenville was going to be closed in an emergency closure 20 days prior to school start. And my child is autistic. He has ADHD and severe separation anxiety. So with this change, it's already been a headache. I mean, he's finally got used to his school. He, uh, we moved from North Carolina, me being a, a disabled veteran. We, uh, decided to come back to our hometown, because smaller schools, more focus on my child and his education. But with this change, it's, it's, it's going to cause a drastic setback to not only my child, but other children as well. I mean, what's happening right now with this, um, I mean, the reports that were given to us state that the building, there is no structural damage, and the most damage occurred to the building is mud splattering. So, I mean, everything is in working order. The budget has been overinflated. Uh, and I could say that, to over 8.4 million dollars. I thought I would have more time to speak today, but, you know, in two minutes, I'm trying to push out as much information, make you guys aware. I don't know if you was even, uh, tracking. It's not a permanent closure as of yet. It's just an emergency closure. But I'm sure you guys, uh, have an understanding of that. But, um, I mean, when my child attended kindergarten in North Carolina, I mean, he would be kicking, screaming, refuse to leave the vehicle. Staff and teachers would be waiting, knowing that he would have to be escorted into the school. This has progressed with Verdenville, the teachers, the staff, the building, I mean, all that constant has, uh, like, eased his mental state and helping him further his education. I guess that's about all I have, uh, since I'm out of time, but thank you guys for the time.
The next delegation is Tara Ramo, speaking on the issue of truth. The next delegation is Tara Ramos speaking on the issue of truth.
Good morning. Thank you. The Book of Jeremiah, chapter 17, verses 5 to 11 and 14, circa 585 to 580 B.C. Thus says the Lord, cursed is the man who trusts in man and makes flesh his strength, whose heart turns away from the Lord. He is like a shrub in the desert and shall not see any good come. He shall dwell in the parched places of the wilderness in an uninhabited salt land. Blessed is the man who trusts in the Lord, whose trust is the Lord. He is like a tree planted by water that sends out its roots by the stream and does not fear when heat comes, for its leaves remain green and is not anxious in the year of drought, for it does not cease to bear fruit. The heart is deceitful above all things and desperately sick. Who can understand it? I, the Lord, search the heart and test the mind to give every man according to his ways, according to the fruit of his deeds. Like the partridge that gathers a brood that she did not hatch, so is he who gets riches, but not by justice. In the midst of his days, they will leave him, and at his end, he will be a fool. Heal me, O Lord, and I shall be healed. Save me, and I shall be saved, for you are my praise. Dry young God, Father, Son, and Holy Spirit, thank you for your everlasting love. We have repeatedly broken your law, yet you do not treat us as our sins deserve. Instill within us your attributes, make us holy and pure. You alone hold the power to save. Forgive and restore us. Please bless the students and faculty as they embark upon another school year. Grant them success in all their ways and protect them from the evil one. Amen.
Our next delegation is Mary Elena Farrell on the issue of immunization law.
Good morning, President Hardesty, members of the Board and Superintendent Blatt. Thank you for the opportunity to speak here this morning and for continuing to uphold our wise law requiring West Virginia's public school students to be up to date on immunizations for contagious diseases, which once stole or damaged irreparably so many young lives, like that of my friend Letha from Webster County, whose life was permanently upended when she visited with one of her cousins who had just come back from the West Virginia State Fair. And with her cousin came an unexpected souvenir, the polio virus, which found a happy home in my friend Letha. Her life was permanently upended by this virus before there were polio vaccines. My friend Letha spent 13 months in an iron lung at the Marmet Rehabilitation Center. When she left to go home, her left leg was permanently shriveled, damaged, and weakened. She could never again walk very far at all without some kind of an assistive device, and taking steps was a major challenge. Later, during her 50s and 60s, she developed a condition called post-polio syndrome. Polio for my friend Letha was the gift that never stopped giving. If we can prevent this from happening to our children who are innocent and cannot protect themselves, it will be a magnificent blessing. Thank you.
The next delegation is Robert Gottfried, Robin Gottfried, excuse me, on the issue of immunization.
President Hardesty, members of the Board, Superintendent Blatt, thank you for having me today. Vaccine rates, we all know, are down. Disease is up. The CDC now does a weekly measles report. The governor has referred to West Virginia as an outlier, and he's right in one respect. Forty-one out of 50 states now have measles, including all five states that border West Virginia, but not us because of the excellent immunization law that we have that protects our children. Pertussis has a significant uptick. It used to kill 9,000 people a year, 10 deaths so far this year. The success that we've had from vaccines invented with the God-given talents of our scientists has spoiled us, and we now suffer what I call medical amnesia, forgetting the devastating effect that these diseases have on our most vulnerable population, our children, but also our elderly, our immunocompromised, those who are receiving chemotherapy. Now, I've heard somebody say that you all were unelected bureaucrats, but in my house, we know you as selfless public servants. You get $100 a meeting to be here, and I know there's a lot more work that goes into this. You are law-abiding, upholding an 88-year-old law that has proven the test of time to protect our children. You are fulfilling your highest duty to protect our children from dangerous and preventable diseases. And you could have taken the easy way, but you didn't. And you've shown courage in defending this matter in court. The public supports you. The Chamber of Commerce did a poll last year asking West Virginians, was it a good idea or bad idea to vaccinate children? 86% said it was a good idea. Less than 6% said it was a bad idea. So I'm here to thank you and commend you for doing the right thing, for the fundamental thing that this is about, is protecting our children, keeping them alive and avoiding disabilities. I thank you for your service and sacrifice, your courage and your fortitude. Thank you.
Next, we have Melissa Lane speaking on the issue of executive order 725.
Hello, and good morning. My name is Melissa, and I have lived in the great state of West Virginia for my entire life. I have worked in the energy industry for more than 15 years, taking time to raise my three children, one entering seventh grade, one in third grade, and a toddler at home. Like thousands of West Virginians, I pay taxes, I contribute to my community, and I expect the rights guaranteed to every American, the right to an education and the right to live according to my deeply held religious beliefs. I'm here today on behalf of my 13-year-old son, who believed rightfully that he could attend school this year thanks to executive order 725. That order issued by Governor Morrissey under the Equal Protection for Religion Act clearly states that students will not be denied access to public education because of their religious objections to compulsory vaccination. That order is lawful, active, and has already been upheld in court. So why is a board still standing in the way of families like mine? The West Virginia Board of Education has a long history of excluding religious families, and despite the law changing to protect us, the punishment continues. Let's be honest, this isn't about health. This is about control. You're violating a governor's order, a judge's ruling, and the Equal Protection for Religion Act passed by our legislature to prevent exactly this kind of discrimination. And we deserve to know, who is benefiting from this continued defiance? Are compliance incentives, grants, or pharmaceutical partnerships driving this agenda? Our children are not leveraged. Our religious freedom is not conditional, and your authority is not above the law. We will not be silent. We will not back down, and we will not comply with the unlawful policy dressed up as public safety. Thank you.
Our next delegation is Sharon Lewis on the issue of immunization.
Good morning. I want to salute the West Virginia Board of Education for your attention to the health and prioritization of the health of West Virginia children and your support of the vaccination mandate that's been in effect for many years. I am old enough to remember the iron lung, as others have referred to because of polio, and it was terrifying. We don't want to go back to that kind of situation, and your decisions have kept that at bay. The, and you're doing this despite the political pressure that I know has come upon you, so I thank you for that. Science has told us that vaccination prevents serious and sometimes life-threatening disease. And it's important that we create an environment, a learning environment, where children are safe and that their health is preserved. I, your decision has made certain that children do have a safe learning environment, and also you are supporting the tradition of the Board in putting the health of West Virginia children first. And for that, I thank you and hope that you will persevere in your stance against other positions on this issue. Thank you.
Our final delegation is Mickey Blackwell with West Virginia Principals Association on the topic of welcome back students, teachers, and administrators.
Good morning. Before you start the clock, let me say that West Virginia State University begins classes on Monday and that we graduated over 20 aspiring administrators this fall. So there are new administrators out there coming from state. They're excellent folks, and you know that they're going to do a good job. I want to thank everybody for being here today, and I want to talk about what it's like being an educator, what it's like being a principal, what it's like being a teacher, and I've got two stinking minutes to do it. So just let me say, just let me say that our principals are starting school. They are worrying about things such as staff numbers, bus schedules, openings, and their, their custodians and their cooks. They're worried that they have enough textbooks to get. They are worried about changing schedules and enrollment that's being changed at a time when our governor is touting that he's gotten over 15,000 HOPE scholarships, which negatively affect our enrollment. They have to worry about training our teachers and new policies on cell phones and discipline and PEA again and again and again, and none of these things have been addressed. They also have to worry about students being safe in this climate and hydration being going on. They have to worry about name, image, and likeness policies, which are just starting. They have to worry about measles. My goodness, they have to worry about their student health. They also have to worry about every book in their library, and they have to worry about what names they're going to be called on Facebook because they were found reading something that is not approved by one individual person. Every day they work hard. Last night, two teachers texted me. One had a laminator and was doing her maps and her posters for her room. She has her own laminator. On top of that, and I'll finish up, on top of that, the other was doing a new handbook for Weavis. Our folks are out there working. They're working every night. They're working every day, and they're trying to make school open safely and sanely. And I invite everyone out there to make sure that you thank your teachers, you thank your staff, your cooks, your custodians, and your principals for starting the school year as best they can, given all these new changes that they have to deal with. Thank you very much.
There are no other delegations, President Hardesty.
Thank you. Next is West Virginia School for Deaf and Blind update. Superintendent Birch.
As we get started, President Hardesty, I will tell you, during your opening remarks, I looked right at our most recent grad and looked at her, and I said, you know those three branches of legislation? She said, yes, sir. Yes, I do. You were pretty confident too, weren't you? Good. All right. All right, President Hardesty, Vice President Gabriel, Superintendent Blatt, members of the Board, thank you for having me today. For those of you who have not met, my name is Clayton Birch. I'm the superintendent for the West Virginia Schools for Deaf and Blind. Three years ago. President Hardesty and members of the Board allowed me to transition to Romney to a position I thought I knew what I was getting into. I'd spent many years helping the School for Deaf and Blind. It's been there since 1870. Spent five years I was here, the final five years, trying to clean up some issues that we had there. And so I thought, well, how hard could this be? What a wonderful place. I love Romney. I love the students. We're already, I got some momentum going, so I told Mr. Hardesty when I met him this morning. Been one of the most humbling experiences I've ever had. And I would venture to say that I wish I would have had this experience prior to some of my other experiences here at the Department of Education. Knowing now what our superintendents go through on a daily basis, and I'm speaking to several of them here, when you think you solve one thing, you find there's three other problems. But when you're around these students each and every day, every day, you're reminded why you do it. So I want to talk a little bit about the school, and I know that over the last three years, I've given a lot of updates. I do feel bad for Ms. Blatt, Superintendent Blatt, because of every three to four weeks taking my calls of a problem I have or assistance I need. And she's always been very generous. In fact, she actually gave us some time in October to come up and visit and see some of the transformations. And that's what I want to talk about today is transformation. And I know that we talk about revitalization and changes. And when I say it was humbling, making change is hard. And trying to say this in a nice way, especially with students here, it makes people mad. People don't like change. And when that change includes adding accountability, higher expectations, higher standards for both staff and students, we knew we were going to get pushback. We knew we were going to get pushback. But the story I'm here to tell today is what happens is Jeff Kelly and I were speaking in the hall, when you get those two to three years to really get your change to get in place. So Superintendent Blatt, I used to swear all those years, for 20 years, listen, you say it takes three to five years for a school to change, and I was so impatient and want things to happen so fast. I guess you were right. So, community has been wonderful. We did have to build some bridges with the community, local delegates, senators. It was a closed campus when I got there, and I cannot say enough about the Romney community. But the story I want to tell today is hopefully as I go through the four parts to this, we all come to some agreement that the West Virginia Schools for Deaf and Blind has to change. It has to be something different for the future. And what we've seen these schools become in the past was a place where if you had a child that was deaf, hard of hearing, visually impaired, that's where you sent them. And we still have families that do that. We still serve families there. But what we're finding is because of parent choice, resources being available, technology, we're finding that we're beginning to stretch that out and really become a service to the state and the LEAs wherever a family or child is. So I'll try to tell that mission, or that story a little bit. First up is operations. So Ms. White, this one's for you. Operations have gone very well. It has been a struggle. Just to give you some reference, in 2020, the West Virginia Schools for Deaf and Blind had a finding from the state purchasing office. We had 45 critical purchasing violations and spending violations at the School for Deaf and Blind in 2020. And it resulted in a, basically a letter grade of a D. If you get an F, state purchasing comes and takes you over as state agency. Three weeks ago, we received the four-year follow-up from that report. One minor finding with an A. One minor finding with an A. And Ms. Blatt, that's kudos to the West Virginia Department of Education and the system we put in place to have finances directly attached to the Department of Education. Our process of procedures absolutely matched the departments, whether in any aspect of purchasing for state purchasing, so the systems and as much kicking and screaming as some of our staff members have done to do that and get it done right has definitely paid off. Facilities, our BRIM reports for the last several years before 2022, we would average about twenty to twenty-five findings on BRIM. And those are your facilities. Those are your especially critical findings of safety issues, elevators, lighting, anything. This past year, we got it under five. Facilities were a big deal. They were trying to operate twenty-one buildings on this eighty-acre campus. Twenty-one buildings. We've identified seven that are critical to the operation, and those are the seven we're focusing on. Buildings that the students use, two buildings that have been repurposed for the community. We actually leased them out to the Romney community. And right now, on campus is Division of Rehabilitation Services, Adult Education, Birth to Three, Children's Home Society for Foster Care, Hampshire County Arts Council, Hampshire County Economic Development, Tourism, and Audiology. I'm sure I'm missing somebody, but those are all of the resources we now house on the Romney campus. So it has become a hub of one spot in the end of campus, both for our students and for the community. Again, Department of Education has been critical in that. Jacob Benar, Tabitha Christ have, they visit us about once a month to assist us, make sure things are done correctly. Now, in your booklet you have, I'll kind of go through this a little bit and focus on the school and residents and things that we've had to tackle. And it'll kind of go in that order. But most of you know that two years ago, we did a major transformation of the school. And the major transformation is we are now fully a career technical high school for deaf and blind. And the reason we did that is twofold. One, we thought it was very important that if you are deaf, hard of hearing, visually impaired, there is no reason you are not graduating from high school ready for a career or college like any other student. Two, we had been paying attention to the transition rates for college and career for visually impaired and deaf, hard of hearing students, and it was not good. So we are now, every student that attends the School for Deaf and Blind must attend one of their career technical academies, and it can be college readiness. And each of them have a work-based experience their junior and senior year, both on campus and off campus that we do. And you can imagine, working with the community, it has been a great joy to see the community take on things such as employees learning ASL or companies integrating Braille into menus and things that students be working on. Academics, this is where it gets a little controversial. Not for us here in this room, but for sometimes some of the alumni. We've known for years, and I think Ms. Sullivan, three years, four years ago, when we did the intervention there, we knew what the academics were like, and we knew what the learning environment was like. We made a shift, and we are starting this school year. It was first time, and our HR director cannot go, can't find the data, that we're starting the school year with a fully certified teacher in every subject, every content area. Now, notice I said content area. That means we went out and found a certified math teacher. Doesn't mean she had her D H H or V I. We can give her that support. We wanted to focus on content. And what happens when you take good content teachers and give them the support they need for D H H or V I? Well, the last report I sent you showed seventy percent of every child who took the GSA at the West Virginia Schools for Deaf and Blind improved by between five and ten percent from the year before. Content teachers matter. Certified teachers matter. So it is a little controversial. We are pushing those teachers. They are enrolled in D H H and V I programs. We do give them the support of interpreters. In fact, we now have five of them enrolled in the National Board Certification Program. So we're excited to see them wrap that up this year. Residential, we do house children, for those of you who don't know, twenty-four-seven, which means we have twenty-four-seven care for about thirty to forty kids that live there full-time. Others do not live there full-time. They're in and out, but thirty to forty live there full-time with health services. Athletics are a major part of the school, and I just will take a moment to Ms. Rochelle here was a member of this past year's runner-up in the nation goal ball tournament for the blind. And yeah, look at her smile. We sent our goal ball team, and for those of you who don't know what goal ball is, it is a blind sport, and it is now one of my favorites. I thought it was wrestling, Mr. Hardesty. I thought it was wrestling, but it may be goal ball now. In a gymnasium, two nets on each side, kind of like soccer nets, three-on-three. You're blindfolded, you don't see a thing. Ball has a little bell inside it, and I'm basically trying to roll it past the other three guys, score a goal. And it is harder than you think. We sent our girls who asked, and they said, we've done pretty well this year. We'd like to go down to Florida and participate in the national tournament. And I went, you know what? You have done very well this year. Go ahead. Good luck. And Rochelle knows the story. That weekend, I was sitting on a frozen lake ice fishing with a bunch of buddies. I'm watching them on my phone participate, and I'm like, you're not going to believe this. The girls' goal ball team just finished quarters. They're in the semis. By the time the weekend was over, we have given up ice fishing, and we're sitting in the hut on the lake with a bunch of burly guys around my phone watching goal ball from Florida. And Rochelle, you and your teammate are so proud. But I bring that up because athletics are important. And we find that many of our students that attend even part-time at the school oftentimes want to come for the athletics because they don't get that chance maybe back at their home school. So outreach. Ms. Mary Ann Clendenin here runs our outreach program. We've had to completely revamp that outreach program to meet the needs of the state. We've gone through a heck of a change. You've got about six hundred and fifty-one students in the state of West Virginia that their primary disability is deaf, hard of hearing, or visually impaired. Only between ten and twenty percent of that number attends either full-time or part-time the West Virginia Schools for Deaf and Blind. You have about, in the state of West Virginia, right around nine to twelve each-year counties that does not have a D H H, a V I teacher, an interpreter. They're really tough to find. Very, Kristi Miller, tough to find. So what we do is we try to identify those. And right now, for example, I work with Kim Caron Pleasant County, she's got two preschoolers, cannot find a certified teacher. How can we help? How can we help? Our job shouldn't be, Mr. Hardesty, you're forced, if you want our help, you got to come to Romney. Absolutely not. The West Virginia School for Deaf and Blind is for West Virginia. It is for all counties. So we are building that outreach program to go to the county that needs assistance, to go to the family that needs assistance. We want the families in the counties and the state to know, we are here for you wherever you choose to educate your child. That includes psychological services now, interpreting services. Jane Castos joined our team. Some of you might recognize her from Governor Justice's press briefings. I got to spend a lot of time with her, and I know I'm not supposed to talk to her while she's interpreting, so I will not do that. But we are very, very proud of that program. That also includes a brand-new all- aboard program. And the all- aboard program is an early intervention program where we are working with local D H H, local V I teachers in the school system that want to work with birth-to-three children who are visually impaired or hard of hearing. And they actually get a stipend from the School for Deaf and Blind to do that work. Marshall University has stepped up to support that effort. And finally, the residential program also includes our version of communities and schools. And I know that's odd. I'm sorry, Ms. Blatt, to say our version, but she knows I would never, ever take money from the public school system when I don't need it up there. So there's no way I would ever apply, but we will do exactly as the communities and schools does. We have a large portion of our student body is either in foster care, sometimes wards of the state. And I don't need to tell this board how difficult it is when you come from sometimes broken homes, no support at home. We had a young man show up on the first day of school last year, residential. He's going to live there with the clothes on his back. His family sent him to a residential program with not even a bag of supplies. So communities and schools, that model has served us very, very well. Ms. Clendenin helps Dr. Lewis with that model. Ah, one of your own, Ms. Adams. Sometimes folks forget when I talk about that comprehensive piece of School for Deaf and Blind that the IRC sits there. This is our deaf-blind coordinator for, actually, the West Virginia Department of Education, who just happens to be housed at the School for Deaf and Blind, and she runs our Instructional Resource Center. Anywhere in the state of West Virginia, if you need a resource, assistive technology in large print, Braille comes out of Romney, West Virginia, and she runs that. She does a great job making sure those resources are available. And most recently, there is a link you can go to, and it's like shopping on Amazon. She has created an online store for teachers to go and make it easy to find what you need for your child and get it to you. You want to talk about a shocker? The first time she sent me across a requisition to approve a calculus book being brailed. I wrote it back, and I said, I think you messed this up. She went, excuse me? I said, I think you messed this up. There's no way this is sixty thousand dollars to have a book brailed. She goes, wait till it gets here. It'll be in about eight boxes. We appreciate what you do for the entire state of West Virginia. And finally, the two students we have here, I would have loved to brought more students with me. However, this is their first week of school. And I'll be honest with you, I just spent Monday morning in front of the student body and the teacher body talking about expectations, accountability, the importance of attendance, the importance of academics, and I'll be darned if I wasn't, I was not going to take them out of school to bring them down here. So these are two students from our first cohort of post-secondary transition. As you know from reports last year, we were ready to launch the Career and Academy for post-secondary this year. That's a partnership with Division of Rehabilitation Services, Dr. Striplin from Eastern Community and Technical College, and Moorfield, and Dr. Wallace from WVU Potomac State. It is a four-way collaboration where students who are deaf and blind can actually come, live in a, on campus, receive supports to continue being supported for orientation, mobility, Braille, ASL, things that they would still struggle with, oftentimes independent living skills for some, while continuing to have the opportunity to go to Eastern, Potomac State, or our ACE program for adult career education. So we today have Ms. Rochelle, who actually, I know that we're, I'm really impressed with the goal ball tournament, but I'm even more impressed. She just graduated this year. She'll be attending WVU Potomac State in the nursing program. Did I get that right? Okay. And Earl. Earl has been with us for a long time. Earl is from Southern West Virginia, and he graduated, and we asked him, my goal is always a hundred percent transition. I said, Earl, what do you want to do? He goes, I really want to do construction. I really want to get in there. So Earl is going to be coming back, working, continue to work on his skills. And low and behold, if we don't have two deaf contractors in our area that can actually begin to work with Earl on job skill training, specifically being deaf on the job site. And so we are excited to have Earl, and again, that is twelve that will be joining him. Rachel Lanham runs that program. She brought them down today. Rachel, we are so, so pleased that this opportunity is there. We hope it grows. I know our friends over in DRS are very excited about the possibility of letting families in the state know there's a place where they can be supported as they continue school. Like I said in the opening, we want the West Virginia Schools for Deaf and Blind to not be seen as just this little school in Romney. Romney is, is great, and the community is great for the kids who attend there. But for this school to be relevant moving forward, it has to be a service to the entire state of West Virginia. Wherever you choose to educate your child, any county who needs support, we need to be able to figure out a way to support them wherever they are, however they need supported. So Mr. Hardesty, with that, I know you have a busy, busy agenda, but I'd be glad to take any questions.
Thank you, Superintendent Birch. Questions for Superintendent Birch, Ms. Sullivan?
A, a comment, really, Superintendent Birch. It's good to have you here. You know, yes, we've received your reports, written reports over the past several years, but what you've done today is give life to the school, you know, our impression of it. I well remember a visit I made back there, I don't know, probably five, six years ago, and it was a rainy, ugly day. And I was, I felt badly about the condition of the buildings. But what was beautiful was what was going on, what, with the students and the teachers working together inside the building. What you're talking about is a transformation of the entire program, facilities, operations, academics. I do well remember the academics five, six years ago. And it was heartbreaking because the children were not being afforded the kind of education that would enable them to become prosperous adults. And what I hear now, you're on your way. And that's so exciting to hear and to see. So thank you, thank you for coming to speak with us today.
Further questions for Superintendent Birch? Mr. Gabriel? I feel the excitement in your voice, and I see your face. You really love what you're doing, don't you?
Mr. Gabriel, I've had a great career in education. I loved working at Marshall. I loved doing preschool for the state. I love serving the board. And when I decided to do this, there were a lot of reasons. But it's been a long time since I felt a sense of home, belonging. And I'll tell you what I missed, and I'll say this to every one of the folks here that work with, at the Department of Education. Get out of this building sometimes, and I didn't do that enough. Being around those students every day, listening to what they want, what they need, and I do love it. And to both of you, it's, yes, I am here to talk about all the wonderful things we've done, but do not, please do not think for a second that it's even remotely done. We have a long way to go. I am very happy with some of the changes we've made, but there is still a lot in order for me to come back and say that this is the absolute best place in the nation if you want to, if you want a career technical education for deaf or blind.
Now, how many people are out there that never find their niche in life, that are never happy because they're not doing what they love to do? I don't see that in you. I see passion for what you're doing, and I commend you.
Appreciate it.
Further questions? Mr. Wood?
Mr. Birch, you and I just met this morning.
Yes, sir.
And you said, how long have I been on this board? Really couldn't remember, but I think it's been maybe a year or so. And in that short time, I've discovered this board. Sometimes has to deal with a lot of noise, and, and I chose that word because I've been thinking about it. You and your staff have found a way to eliminate the noise and deliver education to your students. Like others, I see the passion, and I believe it's the most complete and professional presentation that I've had since I've been on this board.
Thank you.
And I thank you.
I appreciate it.
Further questions, Superintendent Birch? Clayton, thank you. Thank you all for coming down today. For all the bad days that we as board members have, this is what makes good days.
Thank you, Mr. Hardesty.
It puts things in perspective. And I can't thank you enough. Thank you for being here. Thank you for this thorough report, and God bless each one of you all.
Mr. Hardesty, thank you.
Next is Department of Education report. Superintendent Blatt?
Thank you. We're going to start with our 2025 assessment results, and Dr. Von Rudy's going to kick that off. Thank you. We're going to start with our 2025 assessment results and Dr. Von Rudy is going to kick that off.
Thank you very much, President Hardesty, Vice President Gabriel, members of the board and Superintendent Black. Uh, I am here today. My name is Von Rudy and I'm the Director of Assessment here at the Department of Education. And I'm pleased to be here this morning to present to you the 2025 statewide Summit of Accountability Assessment Results. Uh, the state results, uh, as well as the county and school results will be available today on the Zoom WV public website. Uh, all of you have received in advance a copy of this document that I'm going to walk, walk you through today. I know you have a busy schedule, so I'll be as brief as I possibly can. What I'm, what I am presenting to you are the overall statewide accountability results as well as a breakdown. For the state by content and grade level. Accountability results consist of the combined student performance across all of our state summative assessments. Including the West Virginia General Summit of Assessments in Grade Three through Eight, the SAT School Day in Grade Eleven. And the West Virginia Alternate Summit of Assessment in Grades Three through Eight and Eleven. Accountability results are based on the performance of students who are enrolled for a full academic year. Meaning that they were enrolled for at least 135 days during the school year and they were present in the end of the year school file. Um, so in this document, we have a cover sheet and then we also have, uh, a, a page that just gives some of the background information. That I've just given to you. I also want to point out that we did have, uh, our participation rate was more than 95%. Which is what's required under federal law. We saw that across the board. There may be some variations. When you dig down into the county and the schools for their participation, but from a statewide perspective, we were above the 95%, uh, which is very good. I'm also going to give you just, uh, present, and I know it may be a little hard to see there, so hopefully you've seen this, uh, uh, in the document that you received. These are the overall statewide, uh, percent proficiency, uh, across the content areas. This is across all the grades, all the tests. And as you can see, uh, and I know President Hardesty mentioned, uh, the goal of improving student achievement. We are starting to see some positive gains in those areas. And as you can see from this overall chart. Uh, we saw some improvement in every content area across the board. Uh, with the highest being at three percentage points in ELA. The next page shows you the English Language Arts proficiency by grade level. Across the board, we saw increases in percent proficient at every grade with the exception of Grade Three. Where there was a slight drop from last year of one percentage point from 46 to 45. However, I want to point out that last year we saw a big jump from 23 up to 24 of about six percentage points. So even though we're at 45 percentage points this year in Grade Three, and that's a one percentage point drop, we're still five percentage points. Ahead of where we were in 2023. We also saw, uh, big jumps in, uh, Grade Eleven of four percentage points and also in Grade Five as well. In terms of our math, uh, percent proficient, again, we, we did not see any decreases in any of the grade levels. Uh, the only grade level, there, we saw increases at all the grades except for Grade Three, which stayed the same at 53% proficient. And then for science, we saw some increases, uh, in Grade Five and Eight, and then we stayed the same in Grade Eleven. So when you look at all of the results altogether, we did not see any decreases except for that one percentage point in Grade Three ELA. So with that, I'm going to pause and see if there's any questions.
Questions, Ms. Sullivan.
Thank you so much, uh, Dr. Rudy for being with us today. Something I look forward to as you know, so I do have some questions. If you could remind us, what is the definition of proficient? How is that set?
Sure.
And, and is it changed periodically? You know, how, tell us about proficiency.
Okay, so proficiency is determined through a process called standard setting. It's a technical process that's approved. By the federal government. We have to have, uh, documentation of that process. When we moved to the, our summit of assessments, you know, the, the new ones in, uh, 2018. Uh, we had to conduct a standard setting. So we brought in panels of educators. We brought in some higher education folks. We brought in some few parents. And what they do is they sit down and they took a look, they take a look at the test. They actually take the test itself. And they go through these, uh, the order of the items. And they place what they call bookmarks at different points to determine what they consider to be at this, at this point. This is where students demonstrate their proficiency in the grade level standards. So when we talk about proficiency, it's where that cut was set by the standard setting panel. And it's based upon looking at all of the items and where they feel like the students, uh, will start to meet that proficiency. Become mastery of the standards at that point. And then we set, because we have four achievement levels, once they set the proficiency. Then they'll set two other cuts in, in order to distinguish the, uh, the does not meet from the partially meets and the meets and exceeds.
Okay, that's, that's, you know, a, a helpful reminder. On the, the first, uh, page with the overall percent proficient. Just a, a technical students. How are state averages calculated? Are you using straight averages of percentages or are you using weighted averages? Which take into account the differences of the sample sizes?
Uh, so what happens with, in calculating that is you simply take all of the number of students. Uh, so we're looking at across, uh, in, in, you know, we're looking at the different tests. So we have our alternate students that take the alternate. Uh, achievement test, alternate, um, assessment, and we also take the students that take the general summit of assessment. We look at the numbers that are considered proficient on each one of those and we calculate the numbers. And then we divide by the total number in order to get the proficiency. So it's, it's, it's a straight proficiency. They're not, there's no weighting involved in any of that.
Okay, even though the, the, you know, if you have, and I'm gonna make it simple for me, if you have, um, 100. Third graders in the state and you have their average and you have, uh, five eighth graders. So you have different sample sizes. Isn't there some statistical method that is used to give weight? To, rather than just adding all the, the percentages to get, we'll talk about it sometime.
Yeah, no, it's, 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 you're, yeah, but, but because there's, the numbers are so large across all of them. That, uh, we just simply do that straight calculation of proficiency.
It just would be interesting to try that, that weighted one.
Sure.
Now, we have approximately 1,600 charter public school students in Grades Three through Eight. Are they included in this?
Yes, they are included in this because they're considered to be public school students.
Even though many of them, if not most or all, take the test virtually.
That's correct.
So they are not under the same standardized testing conditions that the public school students would have.
Well, they're under, under the same standardized conditions. The only difference is the fact that they're administered the test remotely. So they're monitored remotely, but the, they're still the same expectations of delivery of the assessment.
And you know, and, and you know how I, 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 I feel about that. I, I, I just think it's very unfortunate that we've. Gone that direction and allowing that. Um, it used to be that we talked about statistical neighbors. And this is such a fine vehicle to get our, our counties and our schools working together. A, a school that has. Similar demographics to another school that's doing very well connecting them to see what the. Are, are we doing that as a department?
I'm, I'm sure that we will take a look and, uh, you know, once the results come out and the, the counties and school results will come out today on Zoom WB.
Yeah.
And so then you can actually go in and start to take a look at that. But that, that's something I'm sure that as a department. That we will take a look and see, you know, the like counties to see how they're performing and, and, uh, see what, if ideas that can be shared across the, uh. To make improvements.
And in, in that regard, are we also looking at instructional materials? Um, you know, it's, counties have put immense dollars into programs. And I know, um, President Hardesty, we've talked about all this money going to, do we know that there were?
Talk about it again here in a minute.
Oh, okay. Well, I, I.
Oh, you're fine.
I, I, I just want to see if, if, if we're looking to see, is there a correlation between programs? Textbooks, other materials that are being used and performance on state tests. And that would again, help our counties know what they should or should not be perhaps purchasing.
Sure. So from our, our standpoint, we, our, you know, our office doesn't deal with the instructional materials. But we will always provide data and can do some analysis and work with our, our data office as well in trying to calculate some of that.
Well, I, I just think that might be something worth looking at. So thank you. Thank you for your good work.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Vaughn, uh, thank you for the information. Um. Ms. Sullivan may have read my small mind here and I appreciate that, but, uh. Three years ago, when I first became President's Board the first time, I asked the department to take a hard look at getting back to the basics. That being reading and math. Um. I think you all have done that and I applaud your efforts for that. Uh, we got a long way to go, but I do feel like that we are trending in the right direction based on these results. I would ask our 55 county superintendents, and don't get mad at me, but you know how I feel about this. Stop spending your limited resource on your retired friends canned education programs. Invest your dollars in your employees. Work on quality professional development for your teachers. To deliver a program to our children. Don't go to the ASA meeting and talk to your retired superintendent friend and buy the latest, greatest snake oil salesman. Can program that they're trying to sell you and waste our limited dollars. Please don't do that. Invest in your employees. I can take a properly trained teacher and a comic book. And if you use proper phonics, teach a child to read. Don't need a canned program, comic book. I found out three years ago that we, we quit teaching phonics in schools. Why? So I learned how to read. If everybody in this room would, would be honest with me, most of that's how you learned how to read. Sound word. It is not rocket scientist. County superintendents, hear me, please. Do not waste your dollars on the latest and greatest program. Invest in your employees and these trends will continue in a positive manner. Thank you, Vaughn.
All right. Thank you very much.
I'd like a few things and it goes to several points that we have made, uh, or heard over the, the last hour or so. And one is the fact that of investing in our teachers and investing in the effort of school improvement. And I think that we have made, our counties have done a lot of hard work, our teachers and our administrators to truly implement and look at. What are the basic skills our students need to be successful? The legislature, of course, passed the Third Grade Success Act, which piggybacked the year after President Hardesty's, um. Pushed to get back to the basics. And I think that our counties have really put in the effort and the work to make that happen. So I do want to highlight when we think about growth and we know that we want our, we want our students to continue to grow. We want proficiency to be where it's at. That in math, 48 of our counties improved from last year. And 26 of those counties met or exceeded the growth target that we have set, um, with our ESA plan and the US Department of Ed. In ELA, 52 of our counties improved and 30 of those counties met or exceeded the growth target. And so we are definitely, uh, trending in the right direction. We know it is a process of three to five years. And we're seeing those gains. And one of the things that we know about school improvement and increasing percentages. As we look, look at these summative assessments is you have to stay the course. You have to continue to implement and do the programs, the processes that you're doing. And so I want to thank, um, our board. For their direction and then I also want to thank our counties for the hard work they've invested. And the legislature, the funding that they have put in to ensure not only that we have the instructional aids in grades K through three. But also the invest, um, the investment that went into, um, the letters training and the work that we're doing with our teachers across the state. Um, I will, got two more quick items. One, I'm so sure you've seen the media. Um, we have announced our finalists for Teacher of the Year and Service Personnel of the Year. And we'll be recognizing our 26 Teacher and Service Personnel of the Year, September 9th at the Culture Center. So we hope everyone can join for that. Another big piece of legislation that we've talked about, um, for several years now is the discipline. That we're dealing with in schools and the discipline bill, Senate Bill 199 that was passed this last session. On dealing with the students and how that we provide interventions to them and the supports and things that we need for them. And, um, Jeff Kelly and Drew McClanahan have worked on that guidance document with many other staff members here and. Um, administrators and teachers around the state. And so they, we did a call yesterday with superintendents. To explain the guidance that goes along with that bill, along with the forms and things, suggestive forms to be used. And we'll be doing regional meetings and calls, um, with our principals to make sure everyone understands what needs to be done there. And that concludes our reports.
Hey, questions with Superintendent Black? Ms. Sullivan.
Speaking as a former principal, longtime principal. The amount of paperwork. That will be, um, involved in this implementation of Senate Bill 199. Is it more than what already was in play? I know it's somewhat different. But as a principal, you know, I, I, I took a lot of time to talk to kids. You know, to me, that was the biggest deterrent or, um. It made measurable impact in there and kept talking to them over and over and over again. So is, i- am I going to now be having more and more paperwork to, or weaves to fill out?
Yeah, I don't think it will be more. It will be just, you know, documenting the processes that we are using. And it does ask for, um, intervention or improvement plans. Um, whether it's a formal behavior plan, um, but it's actually looking at individual students and seeing. What their needs are, what the root cause might be, um, of their behaviors. And then we also have our Technical Assistance Center at Marshall University with our behavior specialists that will be working and supporting the schools. When interventions such as meaningful conversations and meeting with the parents. When those things don't work and we need to take it a step farther, we'll have resources available.
I, I just would like to think that relationships, the value of relationships between. Um, administrators and students and teachers and, I mean, that. You really, if you can build that sense of community, it goes a long way.
Absolutely.
A- as you know.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is a consent agenda.
I move to.
Is there a motion to approve, Ms. White? Second. So it's been moved by Ms. White, second, Ms. Gabriel, discussion. Any questions? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? All in favor, all in favor signify by saying aye. Let's don't do it twice.
There we go.
Motion carries. Next, other new business. Ladies and gentlemen, we have the annual appointment of the Western Board of Education Statutory Units and Liaisons. Um. I recommend that we appoint Kathy Justice to the West Virginia Educational Broadcasting Authority. Gregory F. Wooton to the School Building Authority. Christopher Stansberry to the School Building Authority to fill an unexpired term of myself. Robert Dunlevy to the Western Secondary School Activities Commission. F. Scott Rowtruck to the Holocaust Education Commission. And Nancy White to the Education Alliance. Is there a motion to approve these statutory units? It's been moved by Ms. Sullivan, second. Second, Mr. Gabriel, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Motion carries. Next is Pocahontas, Pocahontas County Schools update. Ms. Criner, good morning.
That, there we go. I have, I still have my teacher voice, but. Um, as you'll recall, in February of this year, um, this board declared a state of emergency existed in Pocahontas County. Related to leadership, grading practices and counseling at Pocahontas County High School and special education. Um, during this six months, um, a comprehensive monitoring for special education was conducted by our Office of Special Education. Um, systemic issues were identified. Um, systemic issues were identified and those um, those systemic issues are going to take some time to address. However, um, there has been plenty of progress made. Um, today I have the newly appointed Superintendent Dr. Letha Williams and our liaison, Deirdre Klein there to um, provide an update of progress that's been made. And the board will decide whether to extend the state of emergency, end the state of emergency, or im- immediately intervene into operations there. I'll invite uh, Dr. Williams and uh, Ms. Klein to the podium and they've brought some handouts, which I'm going to distribute while they're speaking.
Good morning, President Hardesty, members of the board and Superintendent Blatt. Thank you for the opportunity to address the board today and the concerns in Pocahontas County. Our focus in Pocahontas County Schools has been building a stronger community of schools. We are working on equipping individuals with skills and knowledge needed to successfully progress our county forward. I have started this process by crafting a robust professional development plan to open school. Our theme this year is we are stronger together. We are stronger together when we learn together and plan together. Today I would like to share with you the work that has been done in Pocahontas County Schools since I started July one and the steps that will be taken to establish long-term county capacity. I'm going to start by addressing um, the central office and our liaison, Ms. Klein, will address the work that has been done at the high school. We are so fortunate that the West Virginia Department of Education has provided us a liaison to work with and we are grateful to have Ms. Klein. Thank you. So I'm going to start with standard one, which was a focus area, the comprehensive school counseling plan. We were non-compliant. That plan has been completed and we have reviewed it extensively. We have looked at all of our data, which includes um, attendance data and that is a focus in our comprehensive school counseling plan this year. We would like to decrease our chronic absentee rate by five percent because we believe that is essential. Students have to be at school to learn. So that is one of the first things that we are going to do. We are also going to look at realigning our counseling services. We have had a very difficult time recruiting and keeping counselors. So we're going to look at establishing a supervisor of counseling services and um, adding deans to a couple of our schools and having a supervisor, a certified counselor supervise those deans. The next area that we um, had non-compliance in was student PEPs. They were not developed and they were not in place. We believe that PEP plans are essential for career development and college readiness. So in order to ensure that that occurs on time throughout as a capacity building mechanism, we will establish a calendar of when PEPs should start late fall and benchmarks for completion rates established to ensure that all plans are done mid-January. That will include both the middle schools and the high schools. At Christmas break, we will begin to start the scheduling process. Um, compliance, non-compliance two point one, a lack of expertise in the correct use of WEVUS. One of the first things that I did as superintendent was I realigned the central office um, and went to the board with a plan. The board has approved that plan. And part of it is creating a director of personnel and technology. And under that director, we have established a new WEVUS contact. That WEVUS contact was trained this summer and will be a direct liaison to all the schools to ensure that our schedules are completed, that our grades are turned in on time, that there's no incompletes in our coursework, and that we are transcripting our grades at midterm and at end of the year to meet this non-compliance factor. Focus area number three, that was an area of concern, was central office support for principals. For the principal had been inadequate to meet a beginning school leader and to ensure that overall success of the school. One of the things that um, I have put in place at the beginning of the year is we have already had a principals academy. During that principals academy, we trained our principals on the West Virginia Standards for Effective Schools and calibrated our understanding of what schools need to be, what schools need in place to be effective and have identified where we would like to focus. We have trained our principals on how to work with parents. An area of concern in our report was data security and password protection and FERPA. We have trained them on all of those things and made sure that we have secured our passwords. We are also um, working on protocols and procedures in our central office and making sure that all of those are understood pervasively in our county. Everything from the procurement procedure to bus pass procedures. We have also worked on some team building activities with our principals on how to work with people from different personalities and ensure that we um, have protocols and procedures for working together. In addition to that, all of our principals are actually being trained today on special education and some highlights of that to address our monitoring would be um, debriefing our report with the West Virginia Department of Education Coordinator. We are looking at understanding the IEP framework. We are looking at administrative roles in the IEP process. We are looking at legal and compliance responsibilities and timelines in our IEPs today. We are looking at data-driven decisions when we are writing student goals. We are looking at supporting and implementing, teaching our principals how to have oversight of the IEP process. And we are working on building a culture of compliance and collaboration with our principals. Our other areas um, that we have the focus on were, in our uh, special report were um, area five, special education, area five point one, five IEPs that were reviewed for service verified that the service was, could not be verified. We have asked our consultant, um, Lydia Young to do an audit of all of our IEPs so that we can updra- update those and address those periodically to meet our timeline on October third. So my final thoughts today for Pocahontas County, we have also worked with Dr. Howard O'Call of the SBA to provide our Pocahontas County Board with advanced training and procedures and protocol. And I would like to thank two of our board members for being here today, President Grimes and Vice President Hollinsworth. Thank you for coming today to support us. Um, the board agenda has been updated to include school improvement efforts on every agenda. And all of our schools will report out three times a year after each of our three benchmarks. The Pocahontas County Principals have been trained on the LSC, LSIC process. The central office has been um, realigned and there was a lot, there was a lack of transparency. So we have created a website with each of our directors pages, what they're responsible for and all the forms needed. If you are from the public or from the school system to get support. All principals have been trained on attendance strategies. We have attendance plans in place, which is a large issue in our county, attendance. And we have done a systematic review of policy five thousand and we are going to start aligning our hiring practice with the stay-put rule to ensure that we have high-quality teachers in our classrooms and our aides are staying in their places after we have our opening training. That is a problem that has occurred in Pocahontas County, students move, uh, teachers moving around after they have been trained. And when you provide them specialized training, we need to have the children, the children need to have an opportunity to have access to that, so we need them to stay put. Those are some of the things that I have done um, with the leadership of Pocahontas County over the last thirty days. For the Pocahontas County teachers, we are bringing back a teachers academy as well. That academy will have keynote speakers that will talk about motivated to learn, which will help with any discipline issues and help us address our special education needs. We will also have a keynote speaker, Randy Keaton from Mountain State Co-op, which will talk to our teachers about a system of support, a tiered system of support and the science of reading. We have an activity planned, working together as a team, so our teachers and principals know how to work together. Um, we will be training, uh, one of the fundamentals that we are going to focus on is handwriting cause concept of print is essential to learning to read. So we need to make sure that every student has concept of print down to make sure our reading scores continue to increase. Our math teachers will be provided um, customized professional development, six through twelve. Our social studies teachers will be provided customized um, professional development on the new social studies adoption. All teachers K five will be provided customized professional development on the social studies adoption. And we will focus on writing from sources from that adoption. We have our English Language Arts and Science teachers. We'll be work, working with Susan Garrison from the West Virginia Department of Education for the day. And we will talk about vocabulary and comprehension in the content areas. We have a specialist coming in for our related arts and our CTE programs. They will also talk about engaging our students in math and ELA and non-core content. So we will learn how to make sure that we are integrating those skills effectively in our related arts and our CTE program. And we will end our academy on the third day, again, addressing concerns from our monitoring. We will have a coordinator from the West Virginia Department of Education that will debrief the special education monitoring report with our teachers. They will focus on teaching and training our teachers on um, IEP essentials, what is an IEP, key components, PLEPS, goals, services, accommodations, legal foundations of ID, IDEA. And they will quickly overview the timelines for compliance. Module two that they will have is collaboration and the roles between the general education teachers and the special education teachers. And our module three will focus on writing effective PLEPS using classroom data and observations to drive our strategies. And their final um, modules will be monitoring progress of our students and common challenges and how we solve those together as a group. Some other things that we will put in place to ensure that we are addressing the needs of our special education monitoring is um, a system of working together. We will have a checklist that is developed and we will check each other's work. So when the uh, IEP teacher completes, the IEP, the special education teacher completes the IEP plan, the principal will have a checklist of making sure that's complete. We will establish another system at our county office where the Director of Special Education will also check that plan to make sure that we are not having any clerical errors or technical errors in our plan. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Uh, you've been busy.
I have been very busy.
A, a little bit of background, are you from Pocahontas County?
No, I grew up in a small community in Greenbarg County called Neola, West Virginia.
Okay.
So Pocahontas County is very similar to the geographical region where I am from and I have family in that area. So um, I love it. It's beautiful. Uh, people are so nice and um, it's been a great experience the last couple of weeks.
And to have Ms. Klein as your co-conspirator, you, you're, you're really fortunate to have her. She's just an outstanding educator and has done so much over her career in West Virginia. Very impressed. So I'm glad she's working with you. A couple of, yeah, and it's, it's good to see all these things checked off on this list and, and the things you're working on all. I have a question about your very first item, attendance. So the attendance rate was, the chronic absentee rate was fifty-three percent at the high school? Is that what that's saying?
Yes, we had a hundred and thirty-eight students chronically absent of two hundred and sixty.
Okay.
So.
Do you think that perhaps you're undershooting your goal by uh, decreasing that by only five percent?
I do believe it will even decrease by a greater level. Um, we had sent our attendance director and our principals to an attendance conference and the recommended decrease was five percent. I feel it should be around twenty-five percent.
Yeah.
But at the same time, um, I don't want to be too pushy when I know we're going to meet the goal anyway. But yes, it needs to be by about twenty-five percent. I would agree.
And I'm, I'm sure you're investigating why students are not coming to school?
Yes.
So, so you're talking to students. Um, d- does Pocahontas County have a robust CTE program?
We have an excellent CTE program, however, there are some things that I would like to add to that program. Um, I would like to see a JROTC added to that program because we are a community that do, we do have many students that go into the military. We also are fortunate to have a local community hospital. So I would like to see something with nursing and phlebotomy to feed into that. And I really feel like it's an untapped resource in some of the southern areas that we don't have something like a meat lab because the beef industry is big in Pocahontas County. So I would like to expand our CTE.
And how are students being involved uh, to improve Pocahontas, Pocahontas County High School? How, how are they feeling connected to the process you're working on?
Well, when I first got the job at Pocahontas County in June, there were several students that had appeared before the Pocahontas County Board of Education that represented the student government. There's one from each grade level. And when I was working on the Local School Improvement Council with the principals yesterday, I said, at the high school, we should include a student. So we made a decision to have four students, one from ninth, tenth, eleventh, and twelfth grade to be involved in that process and discussion of how we're moving that school forward.
Good. Thank you. Best wishes to you. We should move ahead.
Thank you. Uh, I believe Ms. Klein is also going to address the high school.
Good morning, President Hardesty, Vice President Gabriel, Superintendent Blatt, the West Virginia State's Board of Education members and the West Virginia Department of Education staff. I'm pleased to be here today to offer an update regarding the tremendous progress that has occurred and continues at Pocahontas County High School. And I was involved with the Pocahontas County Schools overall, uh, project as well. Tremendous progress is occurring there. For this piece, I'm focusing directly on the high school. To itemize the effort, energy, creativity, and time that the administrators, teachers, families, and students have put into making Pocahontas County High School better, more effective, and more efficient, a place of learning for the children of Pocahontas County Schools is nearly impossible to itemize because that work has been massive and has been done in a very short amount of time. And it's, it's immeasurable, the difference that I see already. But I'll try to do that work and to itemize the ongoing progress and with this update. I'm Deirdre Klein. I'm a retired Wyman County School Superintendent. I retired in ju- actually June thirty, twenty twenty-four. And I'm here today as a support liaison for Pocahontas County Schools. And I'm also here today to tell you that retirement is not all it's cracked up to be. And this is joyful work for me. So I'm grateful. I want to talk about the special circumstances review. I am sixty-one years old. I have learned to utilize technology. When folks start talking tech talk, I kind of tune out and wait for the bottom line as to what I do. And if you can relate. And if you can relate to that, you understand the Pocahontas County High School prioritized, itemized to-do list. That is on paper there before you. We have meetings about that list as we work together. I was literally at the high school three days a week, beginning the last of February. I focused on the central office absolutely, but my primary focus was that high school because the need was great. And that was the immediate service to children that I saw that we could make a difference in. We had a brand new principal at that time. We had, at, at the very end of February, that was the second principal that that school had had. That school year, and I think the third in as many years. So it was time for change and we seized that opportunity. When I went there, Mr. Jeff Kelly, Assistant Superintendent told me, he said, I said, I'll just focus on the list. Cause I've never done this work before, this support liaison work. And in that capacity, and he said, well, you know, that's, that's fine, but when you go in, know that, that that. Special circumstances review is not all there is. You will, and I've heard this reference this morning, you will find something and then you'll find two or three more things. So not everything on that list is referenced in the SCR, but I've marked the things that are. I have literally. A three-page list that corresponds with that to-do list, but in the essence of time, I'm going to. Pick out some focal points, but it's all there in that to-do list, plus so many ongoing efforts. Yeah, yes, sir.
We've got a very extensive, uh, detailed listing from the super. Uh, I think this board is ready to go and make a motion.
Yes, sir.
You all another six months to continue this good work. And report back to us in February. You know, it looks like you all got a clear path, looks like you are focused. And how about we get back to it? And with that, I'll entertain a motion to, uh, extend this for six months.
So moved.
If they move him, Mr. Wood.
Second.
Second, Mr. Gabriel, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Morning, Mr. President, Vice President Gabriel, members of the board, Superintendent Blatt. Uh, we are on Logan, correct? Let's keep my county straight there. Um, at the specific request, West Virginia State Superintendent Schools, the Office of Accountability conducted. A special circum- circumstance review of Logan County Schools, September fifteen of twenty-two. Uh, regarding complaints, board governance and central office leadership. Uh, a team of staff members from the department. Uh, subsequently can, uh, compile the data collected during the review. And presented the findings to the West Virginia Board of Education during a special meeting on October twenty-seven of twenty-two. Um. Of course, which resulted in a, uh, intervention. Uh, you all were last updated in February on Logan County Schools. Uh, I'm not going to take Superintendent Allenbacher's time here, but I'll be, be brief and I want to point out, President Hardesty. Uh, you said in your opening remarks, you circled back around to achievement. And that sometimes gets lost in the shuffle, but I want you to know it doesn't get lost. In the shuffle in my office and it's not getting lost in the shuffle with our superintendents in our intervention counties. Um. The things that are going on with academics. Um, are outshining in my mind, I think what Mr. Wood may have referred to earlier is noise. I think that's what the, the, or somebody said noise, I thought it was Mr. Wood. Um, and we don't let the noise get in the way. We focus on teaching and learning, we focus on what's best for kids, and I think you'll see from both Superintendent Allenbacher. And Superintendent Miller that that's the focus now. So I'll, 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 I'll bring to your all's attention one thing here and then I'm going to turn it over to Superintendent Allenbacher. In this past year in Logan County. We saw a three-point one-seven percent growth in proficiency in math. Nearly four percent in, in reading. Um, and I'm really pleased with our academic program capacity being built there. Um, and what's about to happen in the next, uh, year or two. So with that minus questions, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Allenbacher, so he can speak to his short time here. Our superintendents every month on, uh, as far as updates. Um, and he and I go way back and, uh. In July, he said that the transition process is time-consuming, but it's starting to make sense. And by August, he said time is a major pressure point. So he's starting to, uh, understand the role of, of, of the job and take things on, so Mr. Allenbacher.
Good morning, President Hardesty and Superintendent Blatt, state board members. Uh, before I go, uh. And to come at some of the things that I've experienced while I've been at Logan, I'd like to, uh. Just send a shot out to our teachers in Logan County. Today was their first day back. I know, uh, Ms. Dr. Blackwell spoke about that a little bit earlier. And educators really don't have a first day back, they work year-round, uh, they don't work an eight-to-four schedule, they work from morning to night. Um, it is something that they do twenty-four seven and when you're good at it, that's what you have to do, so I'd like to say thank you to. Our teachers in Logan County and what they have in front of us. Um. My name is George Allenbacher, I have, um. I appreciate the opportunity to be the superintendent in Logan County Schools on a very short amount of time. I quickly recognized. The passion for their schools, the academic potential at the elementary, the middle and the high schools. And we will continue focusing on curriculum and the operation of our county for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Focusing first and foremost on academic achievement, student attendance and school-based discipline. I know there are a lot of things that, uh, are put in front of us on a regular basis, but if we continue to stay focused on those three things, I think we can continue. Uh, to grow. We will continue to provide our teachers the tools necessary to address academic achievement. Attendance and student discipline. Um, we have a lot of challenges in front of us, we, uh, it was mentioned earlier about, uh, student achievement. Uh, one of those numbers, we are at forty-three percent chronically absent in Logan County. That's alarming to me. Um. One of the things about starting a job as an educator, as an administrator, is starting in June and July. Because the kids aren't in the building, the teachers aren't in the building. Uh, we have pulled, our, um, Director of Attendance has pulled every one of our kids. Who were chronically absent and shared that with our administrators and highlighted. What we are going to do with those kids moving forward. My expectation that each one of those parents are contacted. To encourage those kids to come back in our buildings. If they're in our buildings, we can do more with them, so that is one of the things that we are going to address. Um, I had spent some time, um, talking with our principals about our achievement scores and I like to compare. Apples to apples. Um, I think that sometimes we get lost in the shuffle on what test scores mean. Um, I appreciated the fact, uh, when Ms. Sullivan was speaking about test scores, that is a true administrator. Who has looked at things, data, inside and out, top to bottom. Flipped it over, sat at her desk and looked at it, because as an educator, that's what you try to find out what the trends are. In a county or a school and try to address those needs. Um, I was, and, and when I met with my principals for the first time, I said, you know, I'm not going to tell you how to look at the data. This is how I look at the data. I'm a guy that pulls it out, I write it down on a piece of paper one time, I look at it and then I set it to the side. Then I come back and I pull that data out again and I look at it a little bit different. I can see good trends across the board. Uh, we had some drops in our third grade, um, we had great gains in our fourth grade. Um. We came up a little bit sure, short in third grade again in our ELA and our math. Um, I did see good growth from the PSAT last fall. With our eleventh graders to where they scored in the spring on the SAT, they went from seven sixty-five to eight fifty-one. Uh, so I am pleased with where we are. Some of the things that we are going to continue to do, uh, we are going to continue to work with Solution Tree on our professional development. I was very pleased, um, July twenty-first through the twenty-fourth. We had our elementary schools in for two days and we had our, uh, high schools in, it was optional training. Uh, we had over a hundred and sixty elementary school teachers participate and a hundred and fifty middle and high school teachers participate. We're going to continue with our co-teaching, co-teaching and our collabor- collaborative conversations. Uh, one of the things that was implemented in the twenty-four, twenty-five school year were our professional learning communities. We are going to continue with that and work with our collaborative model. I want to focus more on area growth. Um, our man area, our Logan area and our Chapmanville, our elementary, our middle and our high schools where we can have, uh, achievement looked at. By area. Um, we're going to continue to look at our high-yield instructional strategies. Um, our, our group that we do, uh, pay, uh, we do work with is our I-ready, I-ready for, uh, K eight. Uh, we are going to continue that for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. The preliminary data looks like it matches. Uh, fairly well with our content standards. Um, ultimately, we're looking at our end of the year on the GSA. Uh, something new that we are going to do this year, we are bringing in Mastery Prep. Which facilitates a boot camp for our eleventh grade students on the GSA. In October, we're going to chair in our eleventh grade, uh, math and ELA teachers on the SAT. Uh, all of our eleventh grade students are going to get an SAT workbook to work through with bell ringers on it. And then, um, about two weeks before the SAT, we're going to take our eleventh graders to the Chief Logan State Park and do an intensive. One-day SAT boot camp. My previous county, not to mention, um, we did do this last year there. And we, uh, did see great growth out of our boot camp with our eleventh graders across Canawha County Schools. Uh, so I'm very excited about that. Uh, I am continuing to visit with schools and principals, um. I've met a ton of kids from around the county, I've made an effort to go out and start talking with teams, uh, our fall sports have started. I've met with the man volleyball team, I've met with the man football team, I've met with Logan. Football team and I met with Chapmanville High School and Middle School Football Team last night, so those conversations have been great. Um, my first question to all of them, who knows their SAT score? Uh, I met a young man last night, uh, from Chapmanville. Football players aren't raising their hand and shouting out their, uh, SAT score, but I did have a young man last night. Raised his hand and he said, Mr. Allenbacher, I got eleven hundred on it. I was like, all right, that's impressive. I said, do you know what that means? And then we went into talking about Promise Scholarship and what doors that could open for, uh, him. And I said, now, when you see me, uh, walking around your building, I need you to come up, shake my hand. And tell me that score and we're going to talk about you actually being, he told me he wanted to be an aeronautical engineer, so we're going to start those conversations. Um, I've met with all the maintenance workers, um, give a shout out to my favorite, I know I shouldn't have a favorite, but we have a retired. Uh, plumber named Luther, uh, seventy-four years old. Luther and I have made a good connection and I've enjoyed talking with our maintenance workers around the county. I've met with all of our secretaries, I'm meeting with the bus drivers and the cooks tomorrow, so. Um, it's been very good, I've enjoyed it, the people have been fantastic. Um, I've had to do a couple hard things, um, but that's okay, that's part of my job, um. I appreciate the grit that the Logan County people, uh, have, so that's appealing to me. Questions for me?
I appreciate your enthusiasm. And, uh, you're noted for that, you know, that's, that's been your reputation here locally, so it, it's good to see you. Take yourself down to Logan County. I also appreciate hearing you, you talk about the power of relationships. And, you know, and that's, that's where you can make a real difference in the content and, and all these other things you're talking about. So many good wishes to you as you, as you work with the good folks down there in Logan. Our students deserve the best and I know that that's the way you think, so thank you.
You know, our, um, just a quick comment, one of the things that I've learned over my career is, uh, student ownership and data. The kids have to know the test score. If we have a fancy notebook with everybody, everything color-coded and all it does is sit on a shelf, then it doesn't mean anything. Kids, once they take that true ownership in it and somebody sits down and talks to them about it, what it means. And it doesn't necessarily mean a high SAT score. You can be in a career in tech, uh, program where somebody is being trained. To be a commercial, um, plumber, where they are braising with brass. That's just as important that that student passes that test on the NOCDI or the, um, the certification test. As what a kid gets on an SAT score or on the AP exam, so they, they all intertwine, there's potential in all of them.
I, I'll make an observation and maybe ask a question, but there's been a lot of discussions about. Uh, school discipline and. Goal that the principal plays, you know, then, you know, kind of leading that direction. I was that student who. Spent a lot of time going to the principal's office. I was, and. It just occurred to me that I, I can't imagine how terrifying it would be to get called to the principal's office. And sit down. And be looking across the desk at Ms. Sullivan. I mean, I think she is formidable. And I'm sure you ran a tight ship when you were a principal. With kindness and love, um, but. It was, it was people like Ms. Sullivan that got me to quit making so many trips to the principal's office, so. Discipline is, uh, i- is key. When I met, uh, Mr. Allenbacher, uh. What struck me initially was, he spent the time to go and identify in each of the high schools. The student with the highest test score. And what he related to me was shocking in a good way. I mean, we had some really outstanding kids. In each of those high schools.
We, we have a kid at Chapmanville that got fourteen sixty on the SAT and when I was trying to reach out to his parents, they would not call me back, but they were on a cruise. Uh, so once I sent them an email, they did call me and they were just very appreciative of the fact that I looked at it and I. Said, are you with your son? And they're like, no, he's actually at Harvard this week. And I was like, wow, that's amazing. Uh, Logan County, um, the young lady that was highest at Logan County, her mom is actually a physician in the hospital and I reached out. Anytime you get a call from the Board of Ad, you know, whether you're a good parent or a bad, or a. I don't want to say a bad parent, but a parent that has a kid that gets in trouble, it is somewhat alarming, so I want to try to build on the positive. That we got going on, so we have a lot of good going on. Man, I, I will say, man, I did reach out to man, but I can't get them to call me back, but there's a bunch of numbers there, so, but I'm working on it.
Well, it, it, it's impressed me that you did that and it surprised me in a good way that we have. You know, really outstanding students because frankly, the reports that come out of Logan County are not glowing, right? And so, uh, I think we've got the right guy to lead, uh, the, the, the New World Order down there. Uh, I do realize that we've got some fiscal plant problems that, uh. You know, nobody apparently was aware of or we've only become aware of it in short term. Uh, are we going to talk about those in open section or?
I, I can address them now.
Uh, or it's, it's, Mr. Kelly, however, you think we ought to proceed?
Well, that's, okay, okay, um. I believe we've had a open conversation circulating here between Mr. Allenbacher and myself and Mr. Whitlow. Plan moving forward to assess. All the, the facilities and, but come back with a comprehensive plan moving forward long-term. And so in some cases, short-term, as, as you all can imagine, we got some things that got to be addressed more immediately. Um, I don't know if you want to get any deeper than that at this juncture, but.
Okay, you think you'll be back to this board in?
How about I get with Mike and see what a timeline looks like on that and then get, or Mr. Whitlow, I should have said, um, apologies and then, uh, see if we can. Print out a timeline for you guys to consider in the very near future.
Okay.
If, if that, if that satisfies, uh, you, Mr. Wood.
Yeah, no, that's great. Again, uh, we appreciate having you in Logan County.
Thank you.
Just going to add that, you know. Mr. Allenbacher, when we were down there working with some of the facility issues, had asked that we. Um, have Mr. Whitlow, our facilities director, with his team actually do an analysis of the whole county. So he can present that to the board and then we can prioritize what needs to be done first.
Um. Mr. Allenbacher, I appreciate you being here. Uh, I've had the pleasure of meeting you on two occasions so far, I think, um. Both of them were not the most pleasant of situations, one dealt.
Both of them were not the most pleasant of situations. One dealt with the football facility, the second with Verdenville Grade School. Uh, for full disclosure, Mr. Whitten or myself had uh. No prior knowledge of that. We found out when, when you let us know what was going on. But I admire your passion. I can see it on your face. Uh. I see it in your actions. And I think you're there for the right reasons. To help us with student achievement in Logan County and that's very important to us. That's first and foremost with us. Uh, we look forward to hearing your all's. Updates and what our plan is going forward to work on our physical plant as well as our. Um. Education initiatives, but uh, welcome to Logan.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Again, I appreciate the opportunity to service the superintendent there. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, at this time, we're going to take about a five-minute recess. Uh. We've been going almost two hours and we will come back at eleven AM. Uh. With that, uh, we stand in recess. Thank you.
Thank you again, President Hardesty. Upstate County Schools update. West Virginia Department of Education Office Federal Programs conducted a routine monitoring of Upstate County Schools December of 22. Subsequently, the office accountability began a special circumstance review in May of 23. Those findings were presented to the West Virginia Board of Education in June of 23, which resulted in the intervention of operation of Upstate County Schools. You all were last updated in February. Again, I'll be turning this over to Superintendent Miller here. I, you know, I called her yesterday or last night and I had access to the scores a little bit before she did. I said, "I think I'm really liking what I see in your scores here." And she said, "I don't know." She said, "I was, I was looking at them and I'm not sure that you're seeing what I'm seeing, but we were just talking here." She finally got the data, I think about four o'clock yesterday. Is that when we sent it? And so we saw a 3.2%, 3.3% improvement in ELA and almost 7% in math, which is, that's hard to do, guys, in a year's time. And I'm thrilled with what we're seeing on that front and the work that's being done with, with our teaching and learning program in Upstate County Schools. So with that, minus questions from me, I'm going to turn it over to Superintendent Miller to allow her to address the board.
Good morning, President Hardesty, Vice President Gabriel, Superintendent Blatt, and members of the board. So today I come, yes, excited about those results. He did have knowledge that I did not get until about when I sat down at 11 o'clock last night and I started poring through them. I have with me today Mr. Watering, who is the lay is on that has been working with us, but I also have two new members of my leadership staff, April Sinek, who will be serving as an assistant superintendent, and Tim Durico, who also will be serving in that role. They have multiple other areas that they're going to be supervising. But as we came together with our teachers yesterday, we talked about the power of every day, because that's what makes the difference. It's the power of every day. It's being present, being prepared, and being excellent, so that we can show a path forward, not only for our staff, but our students and community. Over the past year and implementing this school year is a robust tiered system of support in academics, attendance, and behavior. We are working with our principals on the implementation of professional learning communities across the system. Central office personnel will be supporting the implementation and attendance at each of those meetings, so that we can make sure that we are all taking a close look at the data of the students that we are serving every day. We have to understand that data, so we are providing effective responses to meet our students where they are and take them to heights they thought never possible. We also are taking on professional learning for our teachers in writing, the adoption of the social studies curriculum, and we have almost every elementary teacher in our county participating in the letters training. So we are thrilled with how our staff has really taken on the responsibility and the roles that they need to, to help continue to improve student achievement. We are continuing our coaching and support for our building level administrators, because like I've shared before, they are young. So we do have two coaches continuing to work with them from the Jimmy Costas Associates, and we have Mr. Watering that I have asked also to continue to support them when they are not there. Last night at our board meeting, I did kind of shock the community, because it is very apparent with the decline in enrollment, we need to address facilities. And in doing so, we are going to have to take a very close look at closing some of those facilities. It's a tough, it's a tough call, but it's a call that has to be made. We don't have the enrollment as we have had in the past. We have several things that do impact that. Over 240 students homeschooled, 150 students participating in HOPE Scholarship, and you all know what that does to a county finance office and trying to make, make ends meet. We also do not have an excess levy. So we are now heading down that path. But I think in the power of every day, being present, being prepared, and being excellent is the path forward that we need to continue in Upstate County Schools. Any questions?
Questions, Ms. Miller? Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Next is an update on Roan County Schools. Ms. Kriner.
Hello again. As you'll recall, in July, this board declared a state of emergency and Roan County schools exist due to financial deficiencies. And at that point in time, you asked that the board be provided a one-month progress update. I have the newly appointed superintendent, Michelle Stellato, here today to provide an update on the progress made toward correcting the identified deficiencies in the state of emergency declaration.
Hardesty, Superintendent Blatt, members of the board, the Department of Education staff, thank you for the opportunity to return in such a short time span, but we're pleased to report significant progress that we believe we have made in addressing the concerns that were raised here last month. We understand, we understood the gravity of the situation that brought us here, the declaration of the state of emergency in our school system, and we did not take it lightly. We needed to respond with the responsibility in a sense of, with a sense of urgency, transparency, and action. We also acknowledge the important role that both the board and the department has taken to help us identify the deficiencies and to receive the technical assistance that has been provided to us. At the time of the July 9th declaration, Roan County schools faced operational and financial challenges that put us out of compliance with both Board of Education policies and West Virginia State Code. I'm here today to report that we have begun the meaningful work on a comprehensive correction action plan, and while we know the path ahead is difficult, we are determined to restore sustainability, stability, and long-term educational outcomes for our students. To address the concerns raised in the state of emergency report. On point number one, enrollment decline, utilization, and facility planning. We agree that we have an average building utilization rate under 45% is unsustainable, and we have reinitiated the facility consolidation discussion with a commitment to transparency and public engagements throughout the policy, or the process, excuse me. We've engaged the leadership team in conducting a full analysis of all options that would mitigate the deficit and restore the fund balances within a three- to five-year targeted time range. That process included a full analysis of current utilization, enrollment projections, grade configuration models, bus routes, special education requirements, and resulted in our leadership taking, team making a unanimous recommendation that our board allow us to investigate the closure and consolidation of all of our elementary and middle schools. I am pleased to report that on Monday evening, after several meetings, that included a work session and a presentation of the process by our legal counsel, our board passed a motion to direct us to begin the process of preparing impact statements and supporting data for the closure and consolidation of Walton and Gary Elementary Middle Schools into the Spencer Area Elementary and Middle Schools and also Roan County High School. We are committed to stakeholder feedback and input throughout this process. We've engaged news media outlets, local civic organizations to attend their meetings, and we've held conversations with some of our LSIC representatives and welcomed parent feedback that is starting to roll in, as you might imagine. Despite our forward march in the direction of presenting a consolidation plan, we will continue to investigate other viable options that will, that could reduce the deficit but keep the schools open. Case in point, our leadership team has, has recently been tasked with what we're calling bone-cutting measures, that if your schools became open, what would it take to reduce the deficit by the amount that it would in, in a closure and consolidation, but that you would be able to, to sacrifice or give up. To the point of staffing levels and personnel actions, as noted in the department review from last month, we are over the funding formula by 16 positions. In response, we've conducted a thorough review of all of our current positions, their funding sources, their schedules in buildings, and we've determined that we've, we have several areas that we've identified that could be improved, and several of our staff members have agreed to change buildings, share positions, do different things, and we've made transferred, transfers by mutual consent. Subsequently, those positions have been eliminated when we've been able to do that. Every position that comes open is being evaluated and to either be restructured or be eliminated if it's not a critical position that we need to operate our schools. On the point of budgeting practices and financial oversight. The overspending on special education, food service, and the building project revealed systemic issues with the way that we operate our budget and our finances. In response, we've had regular and ongoing communications with the Department of Finance, and they have provided several trainings to us and are going to continue to do so. We've had technical assistance calls, and whatever we've asked for, they've gone out of their way to provide it very quickly to us. We've, we've engaged in a line-by-line analysis to be certain the budget reflects realistic revenue and expense projections, including cash flow analysis for fiscal year '26. We've done a full training of our administrative staff, and we're planning a board training in the future, as stated. We have new internal controls in place, compliance. We've, we've added compliance parts to employee job descriptions to ensure that our federal programs are kept in line with their budgets and are not overcommitted, and that all of our expenditures follow Policy 8200. And we've also decided to expand our treasurer's mentoring program to continue into her fourth year, and we're grateful for that. Our leadership team is, is prioritizing immediate expenditures, reductions in school, at the school and department level, and each principal and department director is responsible for reporting progress towards the established goals that we set as a team. On the term of technical assistance and capacity building, we acknowledge that in the months prior to the state of emergency declaration, the state, there was some guidance provided by the state was not fully implemented. That has changed. We have a dedicated leadership team that they're working around the clock, doing everything we ask them to do, and it's been an amazing 30 days to work together. But we're having, as I said, continued communication with the department, and, and we believe we've done everything that's been asked of us to date and then some. We've got the trainings planned, and then we're continuing to try to generate resources. In fact, I'm very pleased to announce that my team submitted a grant for a 21st Century Learning Grant in May, and we, we learned last week that we are a recipient of that grant, so that'll bring $1.2 million to the district over the course of the next five years. Let me close by acknowledging that this work is not easy. We've hit the ground running and we've worked around the clock to get you this update. It, it won't be fast, and we are making our community angry and rightfully so. They deserve better, but it's necessary. We cannot ask our students, staff, or communities to place their trust in us unless we can demonstrate every day that we're doing that hard work that's required to right this ship. So the Board of Education is here with me today for the five members, as well as several of my leadership team, and we just assure you that, that we didn't take this lightly and we've hit the ground running, and we're prepared to do the work that it takes to make this happen.
Thank you. Questions to Superintendent, Ms. Sullivan?
First, to comment, your energy and, and focus and intelligence and desire to do what's, what's good for the children up there is, is very apparent.
Thank you.
And thank you, and you're being very strategic. Looking at, you know, and I know you, if, if we look back at how this whole thing unraveled and became apparent, do you think that there are enough safety mechanisms built into the accounting system? You work through WEVS here at the department, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Are there not things that are in place or could be in place to prevent this kind of calamity from happening in other counties?
I, I believe the department has, has lots of safety measures in place to prevent this. I am still trying to dial back and understand how this could be possible and also get up to speed on all the things that are available now that I'm standing in this new role. I think that it, it's the responsibility of, of the person sitting in my seat to make sure that we're asking the tough questions and making sure that the financial reports provided to us are, are accurate, and as I said, you know, Mr. Cummings has been on speed dial with us, because anytime we have a question, you know, he will answer that. But I, I do believe we, we can learn a lot of lessons from this, and I, I think everybody that's involved is, is trying to do that, including the department.
Good.
So I don't want to speak for them, but I believe we're all trying to get better. Yes, ma'am.
Good. Now, just looking at some facts about Roan County schools. Right now, or last year, you had 16 children enrolled in charter schools. I believe 14 of them, as I recall, were virtual, virtual charter school kids. The other couple went to the nursing program down here at Bridge Valley. You have 308 homeschoolers, and that was up from 282 the previous year, and you have 85 HOPE scholarships. Now, that was at one point, because that's a rolling thing, and in that you had 49 private schools and 36 homeschoolers. So my question to you, and I, and I understand you're looking at consolidation and why you're looking at it, but are you at all concerned that consolidation will push even more children out of the, out of the public schools?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, we are, and in fact, that's one of the hardest parts. Uriah and I had, Uriah and I had a, a long conversation about how difficult it is to project what the ultimate impact will be, because we recognize in Roan County schools, we're a, a very rural community, that even by car from the board office to our furthest school, it's a 30-minute drive plus. And so we recognize that that's going to be one of our greatest challenges, and, you know, unfortunately, there's no quick solving that problem. And add to your point with the HOPE scholarship and the homeschool, one of the things that we've done probably in the last 45, maybe 60 days at this point, our And so we've really tried to push her towards the student support services side, because we realize that if we can recoup some of these students that, you know, are engaging in homeschool, we're providing a virtual option to them as well, especially as when we get a new applicant coming forward, you know, if they're looking for options to, to use for their homeschooling choice, then we're providing to them our virtual option as, as a resource should they choose to take it. But Mrs. Ash is working very hard right now to address that concern in our county.
And, you know, those of you who know me know that virtual is, is not my preferred method, and I'm sure it's not yours, but and I'll ask Superintendent Blatt, the department does not recommend, offer, whatever, virtual schooling for, you know, you start in, what, sixth grade or fifth grade?
Yeah, the department offerings are in, start in middle school and high school.
In middle school and high, okay. And is, is that a philosophical kind of stance that you've taken?
Yeah, it was, because, you know, the screen time and the ability of the early learners and things with the virtual programs. Now, we did put out some guidance here in the last probably six months or to a year that if, you know, counties were operating these elementary programs, we understood that sometimes that's necessary so that they don't lose them to other
Okay.
school choice options.
Well, just looking, you know, and I, and I go back to the charter schools. I think 83% of their students are virtual, and, and I haven't looked at the grade levels, but, I mean, I did, but I just don't remember it right now, but a large percentage of our, of our young, and these are public school students, and the virtual charter schools in elementary grades. I just think it's something that it, and I know that's not, it, it all ties in together, doesn't it?
Yes, ma'am.
So, but I, I do appreciate your, your zeal and your wisdom and your just boots-on-the-ground approach and the way you're bringing people together.
Thank you, ma'am.
That stands out. Thank you.
Thanks for the report. I want to thank your board members for being here today. I appreciate y'all being here. When, when Kristi Miller was talking, I wrote down one sentence that she said. It applies to Roan County in particular, and also Dr. O'Call applies to your upcoming training in September. I don't know if you have a theme for your training in September, but I think you can take this one sentence that Kristi Miller said and make it your theme. She said, "These are tough calls, but they have to be made."
Yes, sir.
Board members, think about that. Not popular. You're going to get crucified on Facebook, I promise you. But your fiduciary responsibility comes first and foremost. And again, I chose over 30 years ago to pick who I chose for my, is who I was going to serve, and I chose the taxpayers and the children. And when you choose the taxpayers and the children, tough calls have to be made every time. They are not popular. Think about that as you move forward. And Howard, when you have your board training, I use the code book and Facebook all the time. It's as simple, who, which master you're going to serve. Bible says you can't serve two masters. You either serve the code book or Facebook. Choose wisely is all I can say. And Greg and I spent time on the Logan County Board back in the late 90s, and I put something on the wall at the boardroom, and I asked the board to look over at that bulletin board before they voted on any issue. Before you vote, look over at the board. And it says, "Our decisions impact children." When you get ready to vote, and you can make a vote that is in concert with that statement, I really don't think you can go wrong. You all are in a tough position. Revenues light, tax base is light, enrollments down, it's not a good place to be. I think you're trying your best to make the best of a tough situation. We, as a department and a board, stand committed to help you in any method possible. We do not like taking over counties. We don't like doing states for emergency or intervention. But remember, and Howard, if you can use part of this in September, please do, tough calls have to be made. Thank you for your time today.
Yes, sir.
Next, we need to enter executive session for some legal issues. Is there a motion to enter into executive session? Mr. Gabriel?
I move we enter into executive session under the attorney-client privilege exception authorized by West Virginia Code 69A3 for discussion of Item F on the agenda.
You heard the motion, Mr. Gabriel. Second by Ms. White. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are in executive session at 11:25 a.m. We are in executive session at eleven twenty five a.m.
Thank you for your time today.
We are back in regular session at twelve twenty-seven P M. Let the record reflect no action was taken in executive session. Um, after consulting with council, is there a motion that we need to address regarding the events?
Yeah, I would like-
Ms. Sullivan.
Thank you. I would like to, to, uh, suggest this. I move that we instruct our council to draft a letter to the charter school board to ensure that public charter schools are in full compliance with the state board's directive that the public schools comply with the compulsory vaccination law, which is West Virginia Code sixteen-three-four and West Virginia Code eighteen-five-G-three-C-three, which states charter schools are subject to the same immunization requirements applicable to non-charter public schools, which does not recognize religious exemptions.
You've heard the motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Second, well, Ms. White, rather than, uh, we just call, secretary call the roll.
President Harstie?
Yes.
Vice President Gabriel?
Yes.
Mr. Dunlevy?
Yes.
Mrs. Justice? Mrs. Justice- Is she back on, Stuart? She is. Mrs. Justice, can you hear me? I'll come back to her. Mr. Row Truck?
Yeah.
Yes.
Dr. Stansberry?
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. White?
Yes.
Mr. Wooton?
Yes.
Mr. President, the roll call is complete and the motion has passed.
Okay. Next on the agenda is Western Board of Education, Department of Education Personnel Matters. First, is there a motion to approve the Western Board of Education Personnel Schedule? The move by Mr. Dunlevy, second, Mr. Wooton. All in favor, signify with a saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Next is Department of Education Personnel Schedule. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
That move by Ms. White.
Second.
Second, Mr. Gabriel. Is there discussion? All in favor, signify with a saying aye. All opposed. Motion carried. Next is Western Board Member Updates, Request for Information. We'll start to my immediate left with Mr. Wooton.
Good meeting, Mr. President. I have no further comments.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Stansberry.
Thank President Harstie. I just want to thank you publicly for your comments that you offered at the beginning of the meeting. I think we've all been thinking and feeling very much the same way as you and appreciate your act and the respect with which you addressed, uh, the governor. And we just, uh, we just want to thank you for being bold and, and offering those comments. I just want to say good luck to all the teachers and faculty out there as a school- safe and successful school year. I've got one, getting ready to start a senior year at George Washington. So we're, we're talking about all kinds of big decisions and everything else coming up. So looking forward to seeing how the senior year goes for him. So best of luck to everybody out there.
Sullivan.
Well said. Thank you for, for saying all that. Um, I have attended several West Virginia Public Broadcasting Executive Committee meetings and also the sale conference that the department had at the Civic Center one week or two ago. Over a thousand participants, um, teachers, principals, bus drivers, cooks, everybody. It was very upbeat. It was very professionally done. And I heard comments that, um, that it was the best conference many of them had ever attended. Uh, it's in the state or nationally. And I was given the opportunity to speak a little bit at, at the beginning of one of the sessions. And I was, uh, touched by the response of, of those there. I do have a request for information for a future meeting. Item five on the consent agenda had to do with the loss of the teacher preparation program at Bethany College. And Bethany has historically had a very fine teacher preparation program. So some things happened. So my request is we continue to see a decline in programs, um, in teacher ed at our colleges and universities, um, not just with the programs, but with specialties and endorsements. Would it be possible for us to have a list where and which programs are still in existence yeah, in our brick and mortar institutions? I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. Dunlevy.
I want to thank everybody for previous comments. I think they were all good and, and thank you for our leadership. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Ms. White.
Thank you very much. And I'd echo everyone else's comments as well. Uh, I had the privilege of sitting on the selection panel for the Teacher of the Year for two thousand and twenty-six. And you talk about some amazing teachers. The five, top five of those were just incredible. So look forward to the September ninth ceremony when we get to hear the results. Thank you.
Gabriel, just want to say it was a good board meeting. Thank you. Paul, once again, thank you for your comments. Everybody is heartfelt with those, with, with feelings about what's going on. We're all worried about kids, everyone on this board. This is a great board to be on and I want to thank you for standing up for us. Thank you.
Um, just a few brief remarks before we adjourn. We starting a school year today. I think-